Why is it doing? Hi, getting the things ready for you. Says it over there too. And ready? And you can start. That's completely nice. It's the TV. There's something that has been on.
I knew it but.
Oh, it's quiet or not?
It seemed to stop.
Well, okay, so one hundred.
Two hundred. Oh, boy, that would've been fun.
I feel my dog.
We're ready to go on?
Yeah. Call me any more.
Plaid doesn't need to be unified of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On call.
Austin Cool here.
Lawyer here.
Haslam here.
Approval of the meeting minutes from October second, one twenty five.
Haslam will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Austin Cool, second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the meeting minutes of October second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any citizen input? Seeing none? Project oversights and updates?
Okay, um, start off with the Indian Hills, Lump Street, Henry Street project. That is a hundred percent complete and it looks minus a couple of trees I got trimmed. Um, they did a really nice job. It looked really great. The grass is all grown back and you can't even tell if we even did anything in there.
That was super quick.
Yeah, Country Services did an awesome job with the seed and their restoration.
Holy cow, I mean, it was done like that.
Yeah, he put enough seed on there. He said, I want this growing. It turned in, turned out really nice. Had to put a fence up by inlet structure where it was parked, kind of a visual barrier to keep people from going off into the storm sewer, but it's all good. Um, Hendrick Street, all the utilities are in, all of the concrete is poured. Um, Cartechner will be there Monday, what they told me with the road grader, started to grade it out. Tentatively, they told me Thursday they'd be paving, um, and then obviously they'll come back and finish the last little bit of dirt work.
Next week.
Next, next week, Thursday, you're gonna start paving. And then Darners will come back the following week and touch up the rest of the dirt work and then the project should be done. I might have to put up a couple of guardrails or something on that project too, like I did on Lump Street, but no big deal. That project should be completed on schedule by the twenty first as slated.
Nice. This is just key.
That's all I got.
Real quick, are they doing anything on the record since they're paving?
I was gonna make that, I drove down there today, I forgot to make that phone call to Mitch. That was another portion that I put the ball in his cart and I forgot to make that phone call today.
Okay.
I will do that tomorrow.
Shut up, I'm reminding.
Thanks, Chad. Unfinished business, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty one, on-call hours for DPW employees. In the package, we find a couple of changes that we made, highlighted in red and lined out what would be removed. Had a couple conversations on this, trying to nail it down. You guys have any concerns with the language?
I know it looks like it's everything that we previously discussed.
Yeah. I think so too.
And I'm guessing this was reviewed by the lawyer?
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. It looks pretty straightforward.
There's no legalities to it.
Right.
It's kind of reinstating what had previously existed.
Okay, now that's not it. We have verbiage, oh for god's sakes, what is going on with these screens?
Yeah, are we comfortable with forty-five days? I think that was on the only big, or forty-five minutes, sorry.
Yeah, I, we have thirty where I work, but I, I don't want anybody to have the rush in snowy conditions.
Right.
So I'm, I'm fine with that. I think the frequency of getting called back in is low enough that I, it's not a huge concern. I mean, certainly they can make it quicker, they will.
Yeah.
Chris or Ryan, Ryan's pushing fifteen, twenty minutes like currently traffic on.
I think it was the agenda.
Do you have any concerns, Charlie?
I didn't see them changing.
Okay.
I was more worried about the one day question on the Sunday and how they.
In my opinion, that's a different topic.
What's a different topic?
The call-in pay.
So it is on here, we just never, we didn't change anything on there, we're not updating it.
Right, well, this is really, well, it's all part of the overtime compensation section, so, so, so I guess you're right, it is included, but I don't see the, I don't know. I think, I see a difference between on-call and call-in. On-call is to be prepared to come, come in and call-in is an action after the, the on-call happens.
That's fine, but when you, when you stated in a sentence that one and a half pay plus double time pay, to me, opens up the possibility of three and a half times pay.
It will, well, it, okay, we could say they get paid a dollar or, you know, they get paid twenty-four hours at four dollars an hour, whatever the math works out to, to be available twenty-four hours a day for the whole weekend. I mean, there's a hundred different ways to word that.
It is, or you can do just straight time and a half, the whole weekend whether you call in or not. There's no, there's no legal ramifications for not paying double time for holidays or something.
Right, there is.
So just overtime, you would get overtime for that.
We've typically, when we get called in on Sundays or holidays, it's always been, well, on Sundays was always double time. If we get called in on holiday, it was double time as well. That's the way it's been in the handbook forever.
When you get called in?
Yeah.
But you're already, now you're getting paid to be on-call, time and a half, which should have some consideration whether the compensation needs to be doubled up at that point.
They, cause it says if you get called in, it's a minimum of two hours, right?
Correct.
So if anything, that two hours would trump your, your time and a half.
I mean, if you can word it so that it's not being double charged for in-call pay.
Well, okay, what if, what if Chad is on-call and it's a major mess and he's gotta call in two guys? Now that, that second guy isn't getting the time and a half on-call.
Correct.
So.
But, but you can pay them, you can leave the two.
Excuse me?
Sorry, we're trying to swap the papers.
You can get the double pay, makes sense for Sundays and holidays if you leave that in there, but at some point, the on-call person, when they're called in, has to drop off that time and a half. It has to be defined, your time and a half ends then and you're on double time now, cause you're in-call.
Our time she's got on-call and then call-in.
But the way it's worded is plus, the key word is plus, so to me that means you're adding the two together.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with your statement that that's what's happening. The problem becomes when you bring in the second guy. So do you word it such a way that the guy that's on-call only gets time and a half?
I'm gonna tell him when he's called in.
When he's, no, when he's called in, what does he get?
Double time.
On a Sunday.
If it's a Sunday or a holiday.
Yes.
Right. And then if somebody else has to get called in, they get double time.
Yep, so if you took the word plus out of there and replaced it with something else, it'd say, like, you're on-call getting time and a half, cause you're on-call. If you get called in, your rate is now double time.
Kind of just take up plus.
Not time and a half plus double time.
I, I follow what you're saying, but the fundamental disagreement I have with that is the fact that they're on-call for the whole weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
And they're required to respond.
Right.
They're getting a premium, they're coming on a Sunday and a, and a holiday by another half a percent.
Yeah.
Why should they get another bump to three and a half percent? That's the question.
Literally taking out the word plus, I think, just reads better.
On-call in?
Yeah, well, it says employees on-call, holiday pay.
Yep.
Four hours at one and a half time.
Cause it reads to me, it's a time and a half.
Pay for actual time spent on the job.
So you'd have to add the two together.
Not plus. I don't know how often this would happen. It's just a lot of thing that you guys to figure out.
Well, maybe, I, I don't know, I don't know what the frequency of calling is.
And if there's a two-hour, I don't know, if it only comes in for a half hour at that point.
He still gets paid the two hours and the rest?
Two hours, but.
Yeah. I just, yeah.
I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. If we just take out plus, I feel like there's enough commas in there to delineate between the first instance and the second instance.
It's like define where time and a half ends when you're called in and double time starts.
Well, I thought of doing it a different way, but I, you could eliminate that entire line. From plus to.
Yeah, cause holiday pay is.
To two hours.
Yep, you could.
Cause it's doubly stated then in the, in the call-in pay.
Yep. I'm just trying to eliminate the loophole that says that they can get both at the same time.
But you're also getting paid eight hours of overtime for forty-eight hours of readiness.
Or more.
Or more.
Cause three days, it's actually.
Well, no one's gonna.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
No one's gonna kick it Friday, cause we can change that policy right back to working four eighths or five eighths.
Absolutely.
So they're not gonna push back on that.
No, no, we're on-call, on-call starts at end of shift, at the end of the work week and you go until beginning of shift, beginning of work week.
Right. Regardless of holiday weekends or.
Regardless of what time are you in?
Yeah. It's the, the plus thing, if you take the plus, I'll just say, if you called in, your rate is now two dollars instead of three and a half times pay. I mean, it's semantics for words, but somebody could say, well, I'm owed this cycle pay, cause it's stated that way.
Do you feel they're already getting time and a half that?
The person that's on-call is getting time and a half, right? To be on-call, once he's in-call, he should get whatever the rate is for in-call pay, which is defined, right?
It's defined as hour and a half on weekends, or time and a half on the weekends, double time on holidays.
Correct.
Logistically, how do you do that?
That's when they're called in, so they would, they're gonna get their in-call pay, right?
But then you, what do you deduct from the other side of it? Then you have to deduct their in-call pay, cause they're gonna come in, punch in at, at two times, one and a half or two times depending on the day.
You've already defined how many hours you can have, right?
No.
Oh, you did? I thought it was eight hours, right?
Four hours.
Of what?
For on-call pay.
Yeah, it's eight hours.
So if, if they got eight hours in Friday and Saturday and they called in on Sunday, are you gonna pay them three and a half or you just gonna pay them double time at that? Cause they've already accumulated their eight hours, Friday and Saturday. They're still on-call Sunday, so you really don't owe them anything.
Right.
Except in-call pay.
I guess my point is, if they come in and you start to pay them at two times, how do you remove, what part of the eight hours do you remove? How much of that do you remove?
I don't think.
Isn't it four hours a day, so would you just take it off? If it was an hour.
Do they use the whole day, cause they came in for two hours?
Yeah, I would say if it's like a, a Saturday, Sunday thing and Saturday, you got your four hours in and you were gonna get the four hours on Sunday, but then you had called in for four hours, obviously. It should just be double time at that point and not.
But then you lose your four hours of on-call. For the other thirty, for the other twenty hours that you are at the ready.
Cause you're still on-call for the rest of that day, even though you already showed up for a few hours of work, you're still on-call when you go back home.
Right, you're still on-call, so effectively doing it that way, you're taking away part of their on-call pay and supplementing it with the in-call pay.
At double time.
Or, or time and a half.
Yeah, if you solve it, just say, everything is time and a half, I don't think, you know, does that solve it at that point?
Austin, any thoughts?
You kinda lost me at that part, cause I think the two hours would trump the hour and a half, so they're essentially still getting paid at a higher rate, which I don't think they would buck back at. I don't, the way you just explained it, I think there could be a route that you could argue or they could argue that they're justified at three and a half percent or three and a half times. So I think.
But they're, they're really not, cause they earned that anyway.
Right, but I think they could make a case.
They earned the time and a half anyway.
Right. So I think that Chad, if, if we just, in that scenario, do you think everybody would be sufficient with just double pay, like?
You can't take away their eight hours for on-call and redo the, redo, take the plus, I mean, at the point of calling, you get receiving an hour and a half or time and a half or double.
Yep.
Yeah, you can't, you know, take away their on-call pay to supplement if they actually commented on it, because if you're on-call for the weekend, you're on-call for the weekend.
Right. That, that's, that's the way I see it too.
Cause basically they're on-call for the entire weekend, every hour, and they're only getting paid for four of those hours, so if they come in, we don't really wanna take away, they're four hours a day, right? Because they came in for just a little while.
Really, really, it's, it's the only thing you're giving them is extra because they're coming in on a Sunday or holiday.
Yep.
Otherwise.
It's just time and a half.
It's just time and a half.
Correct.
And they're gonna get paid the same no matter what, and that's where they do argue. It's the same, we're not gonna pay double time at that point, if you get called in, it's time and a half and it shouldn't interfere, cause you can, you're not getting three and a half or three, you're only getting time and a half, cause you're supposed to be on-call or in-call.
We get three.
The assumption is the same.
So you're saying make all call.
Why should you bank more because you're on-call? The expectation is you're either gonna be sitting at home waiting to get called or you're gonna be in, working, correct?
Essentially.
Why should you double dip, be eligible to double dip at that point?
Because the other guy that gets called in.
Gets double.
Will get cut then, or is the second call in.
Yeah, but he's, he's not required to be around, it's if he's around, he's not required to be around.
Right, he's not required to answer the phone or come in and help either.
Correct, correct.
I just dislike pushing employees to a point where they say, well, screw you, I'm not coming in, cause I'm not getting that extra. And I think that's, that's the worst scenario than, than the few times that we're gonna pay the double time or three and a half times money-wise, like.
How, how often does this happen?
That's just what I was gonna say.
Because if we're talking once a year, I think we keep it as is and we're kind of arguing, but if it's fifteen times a year.
If you call attention to it, it happens, they will take advantage of it, that's human nature, believe me, it happens.
Well, I get that point, but I also think we need to see or understand what the, the trend is, what the history has been like.
Yeah.
Year over year, has this been ten events, twenty events, one event? I think that has to play a factor into the decision.
In the interest in to, in the interest of time, my suggestion might be to push it through as is, monitor it for a year, document what had, what happens throughout the year and what the costs are and then reassess if, if it doesn't, if it no longer makes sense. I, I don't know, I think being ready to be called in twenty-four hours for three days should have us, a value and then being called in should have another value.
I don't disagree with that statement.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree to Charlie's point though, I just wanna make sure we do monitor it, that it doesn't become something that we're getting taken advantage of.
Well, we'll absolutely stipulate that and, and Chad already has written a note that he's gonna have to document this through the year, so that we got a full understanding of it. And you could probably look at time cards and figure it all out, but if you keep track of it while you go through the process, it's easier than trying to redevelop the wheel at the end of the year.
And the time cards, from what I understand, are gonna be going digital, online, so that's gonna be something we can easily pull up.
Somebody can, an administrator or someone's.
That's another work into that, why not?
Right.
That, that's fine, that's, that's more real, that's more real.
All right.
Still, I'll say, I'm not a fan of the word plus, but I get where.
You're going.
I wanna be at depth, but I could see snowplow, for example, I mean, it snows on a Saturday night, I'll just wait till Sunday, go in for, cause I'm on-call and spend more time, cause I know I'm gonna get paid double time plus my on-call pay.
But they're getting the on-call pay regardless, whether they committed it or not.
You get paid double time now if you call on Sunday, don't you?
Yeah.
But if, if you waited, he's saying like if it snowed on a Saturday and you decided to wait until Sunday.
You get forty-five minutes to report to duty.
Yeah, it's just a matter, when do you predict that? When the snow's gonna come, when it's gonna get here?
Right.
You know, it's gonna start snowing at noon, it snows at five, we've seen that a hundred times.
But Chad, aren't you the one that's controlling kind of when they're coming in anyway? If you have them coming, they have to come in, don't they? Still, I'll say, I'm not a fan of the word plus, but I get where.
You're going.
I wanna be at depth, but I could see snowplow, for example. I mean, it snows on a Saturday night, I'll just wait till Sunday, go in for, cause I'm on call, and spend more time, cause I know I'm gonna get paid double time plus my on-call pay.
But they're getting the on-call pay regardless, whether they come in or not.
You can pay double time now if you call on Sunday, don't you?
Yeah.
But if you, if you waited, he's saying like if it snowed on a Saturday and you decided to wait until Sunday.
Well, you get forty-five minutes to report to duty.
Yeah. It's just a matter of, when do you predict that? When the snow's gonna come, when it's gonna get here?
Right.
You know, it's gonna start snowing at noon, it snows at five. We've seen that a hundred times.
But Chad, aren't you the one that's controlling kind of when they're coming in anyway? If you have them coming, they have to come in, don't they?
I feel like, I.
Typically, so on a winter storm event, the way I've been operating is. Hey, it's supposed to be done at two, we're all four of us coming in. You know, whether it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and then I just, you know. Our shift starts, when I say our shift starts, if we start at two o'clock in the morning, we're done at ten, if we're done with our.
If you give the notice.
Yes, right.
All right. Six fifty-five, folks. What do we wanna do? We got two options here, we can, we can approve this, we can amend this, which I don't know that we have time to amend tonight, or defer it. Or we can also kick it to the finance committee.
I'm happy to see if the attorney can look at it and tell us what he's dealt with, if you'd like that.
Uh, that would be, that would be.
A legality thing?
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea too.
Well, what what he sees, I don't know.
Yeah. So.
So make a recommendation to go to the attorney and then come back?
Yep.
Yeah, cause we'll have this done before January.
Yeah.
Right, and if we don't, we don't.
We get on three million.
I mean, they didn't have it already, so not having it longer isn't gonna be as big a deal.
Right.
I'd rather get it right than have to fucks with it for three years.
So do you want it to come back here? Do you want it to just go to finance first?
Yeah. Uh, no, I refer to the attorney and come back here.
Okay.
And just question the the plus part and the legalities of that, if there are any implications of that.
Okay.
I can send you that in the morning.
Okay, so, is that your motion?
That is my motion, yes.
All right, Austin Cool's second. I have a motion and a second to refer this, um, in-call, on-call, in-call, call-in pay. To the attorney for review, as written, with objecting to the plus part, see.
I'll 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 make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So what we're gonna, okay, then we're in the natural lawn, so we're gonna.
I think you're gonna call the.
Defer, yes, defer the, so call the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Austin. Motion carried.
Get the hang of this.
Get the hang of this, Paul.
Which is really the resolution, so.
Yeah.
Natural lawn application, I reviewed the lawn application, it seems to make sense. I did have one question that I emailed Chad back and forth about. Yeah, and. Yeah, I want, I'm gonna want something added here, um, I wanna add.
Can you say the number so I can get that on the screen correctly? Which number you're referring to?
Um, six.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna add in the sidewalk, three feet from the sidewalk, or a buddy.
I think we got.
Isn't it?
Go ahead.
I think we need to wait and do, I need to bring you the ordinance, cause we'll have to change the ordinance, this is just the application and the theme.
The ordinance is in.
I can write it in there, right, but we're gonna change the ordinance, so that means I can write a new ordinance form that we're changing, cause that's not in, currently in here, right?
The sidewalk?
Is that what you're saying?
Did you say the buddy cop, the yellow?
It's not crap, I think, and the one with just the.
Correct, it should be stated as buddy cop, or that's typically from the sidewalk.
Yeah, cause sometimes you have, what, seven-foot terraces?
Yeah, so.
So then you're right at the sidewalk, at ten feet.
Yeah, so a question where this, you got this ball rolling, is kitty corner from Tim's house, which, you're correct, you got seven-foot tree lawn, four-foot.
So.
Yeah, so.
I will make a motion to defer that to the next meeting, where we can also look at the ordinance to make sure that they align with each other.
Yeah, cause it's not critical.
Nope, not, this isn't critical, that's right now either. New business, seeing none?
We gotta work on that defer or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second to defer.
Uh, Austin Cool's second.
I have a motion and a second to defer, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed the same, motion carries, thank you. New business, non-agenda, uh, future agenda items and announcements, community calendar, committee calendar, good lord.
Review of the city forest.
Oh.
Montigny, did you do the facility update?
No, I was, I'm gonna do that today, I still have to do that.
Okay.
I don't know of any issues, it's just probably change of furniture, cause I can normally do it and walk through.
Bring the update next meeting.
Thank you.
Austin Cool, make a motion to adjourn.
Hasla will second.
Yeah, motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, folks.
Fifteen seconds to spare.
Well.
Well, hopefully it'll be quick, you know, you're.
Well, yeah, and I didn't wanna, I don't wanna get this wrong.
No, a hundred percent, and and I have no issue with that, and if we have to update the ordinance to match the thing, and yeah.
Yeah, I just think we need that three feet, a minimum of twenty-four from the sidewalk, cause plants will fall over.
I'm just standing.
First, if it's. If we're doing three feet from the adjacent property, which is three feet from the sidewalk, which is. They're all up north, so I only get two to get ready.
You don't run them down here for their one weekend?
If I have to go up.
I'm just staying in every.
Break back down here, but I'm not even down here, I'm not utilizing, you know, that's not. I need a spare up there more than I need one sitting around here waiting for a snow, you know, like, if it comes one, one week in February, usually.
That's fair.
You know, eight hours in the car is totally fine.
Seems that way.
Yeah.
Totally knows.
Maybe this year.
I won't hold my breath.
Me either.
I would.
Getting a lot of snores, you know.
All right. Hey, let's go! Call this meeting to order? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a doubt, made visible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Cummings here.
Austin Cool here.
Charles Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Warren here.
Hasla here.
Uh, meeting minutes approval of August sixteenth, are there any additions or corrections? Cummings will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Act number sixty.
Austin Cool's second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve the meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Citizen input, Gabe, you wanted to bring something up, up parks, since it's not on the agenda?
Yeah. Since it's not on the meeting summaries, we have a meeting, um, that engages at behind Field A, the cement support and the post are up. Um, the total cost is gonna be about thirty-one thousand dollars, and that's all being paid for by the Waterloo Youth Sports Organization. Uh, the second thing is, I just wanted to give an update on the lower pavilion, we had our phase meeting for, um, the pro, capital project down there, the abatement. Will start, uh, the weekend of November thirtieth, it'll take about a week, and then the following week, December tenth, is when concrete coatings will be coming in. And starting to grind concrete, and they should, probably take one a week as well, so in the next couple of weeks here, we'll be starting that project.
Do you wanna make a comment about what Trek is doing?
For landscaping.
They're volunteering here?
Oh, uh, Trek is just going to be doing some landscaping work, uh, next week, or, yeah, next week.
Painting the fire.
Painting fire stuff, and then they will be doing some groundwork, some landscaping work up at the apartment.
So Trek got ahold of us, they've got a group of people that wants to do some community work, and so they asked what projects we had, so between Chad and Gabe. And I knew the fire department, the people wanted those containers painted and stuff, so they've actually even increased more people, so they're gonna be doing some fun stuff in the park and helping out, so. I appreciate Trek for stepping up. Anything else?
What is it?
All right, thank you. Meeting summaries are in your packet, if anybody has any questions on that, no, the summaries aren't in the packet. Um, oh geez, CDA, I'm, I was, I was on consent agenda items, cause he was talking, my bad, CDA. Do you have CDA?
I have to go for it, Charlie, I don't think.
You didn't come.
Oh, there was one, there was one.
It was very brief.
Okay, yeah.
Good work.
I know, right?
He looked at one facade grant, but he didn't have enough information, so it was tabled, that's all that happened.
Uh, fire and EMS, he is not here. Um, we were missing a few of the, um, uh, updates in the consent agenda items. And so there's a handful of the fire department meetings that we were missing, I just wanted to give you guys an update, that the new ambulance is finally supposed to be delivered here in November. So it just kept getting pushed, and pushed, and pushed, and pushed, so it is actually gonna be here. Uh, planning commission was me, we just had two things, we had a CSM for five sixteen South, well, I think it's Washington Street. Uh, just added onto their property, which didn't require anything at council, and the other item is below, library, Sarah?
I wasn't there, but I did get the update, Charlie was there. Um, they, uh, tabled the budget, uh, for twenty twenty-six. And they're waiting for the health insurance and other insurance numbers, um, and so that will be on the nineteenth meeting. And other points, uh, that they got the invoice for fixing the roof, which was just under a thousand, and then. The board approved the circulation policy after reviewing it, so it comes to the board, it comes to the committee like two or three times before.
Sure. Great, that was about it, thank you. Water and light, Richard?
We discussed some water building adjustments, some sewer adjustments, um, projects going forward, ports and pays, to pay requests, and, uh, housing the cable.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna start with an agreement with them.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Try to use that space out there.
That is great. All right, thank you. Uh, finance meeting, you got a couple in a row here, Charlie, the union contracts?
Yeah, we, uh, had a work day with the, um, city's side of the negotiation team to prepare for the union meeting that was held this morning. Um, which was on the sixth to begin talks on, uh, union contract with the fire department, representing employees.
Great, thank you. Public health and safety, Sarah?
Yep, um, two are below, and the other only thing that I wanted to discuss was the Winter Street parking, that starts November fifteenth. And goes through April first, one AM to six AM, and Taylor Street parking is twenty-four hours year round, so that is not included in that.
Great.
Just to let everyone know.
Thank you. Public works, Richard?
Well, unfortunately, we deferred everything.
Not a problem.
So we'll have to skip that as we get down in the agenda.
Not a problem, thank you. All right, new business, um, as you will remember, we did, uh, two freeze agreements for three thirty-three Portland Road, Tiff Three. Uh, the one is still on track, actually, I'm gonna have a meeting on Monday, try and get that finalized going forward, and then Evan decided to pull out at this time. Property isn't ready, he was really in a hurry to get, get building on it, and Mitch's recommendation was, don't do anything until next year, let the land settle and all kinds of stuff, so. Then that ninety-day thing just didn't make a whole lot of sense, so he did, you know, send this email, so we're just approving the unfreezing of the property.
Still interest.
He's still interested, but it just doesn't make sense for us to keep it frozen and then keep updating the ninety days, just. So at this point, though, that means we can, if somebody else is interested, we're, we're not locked into only one person, so what I do wanna do. Uh, I'll have to bring that up in the announcements, I'll bring it up later, but, so, the task at hand is to approve the rescinding of the agreement.
When, when does it expire anyway?
Uh, I think it has only been a couple of weeks since we've actually froze it, so I think it was due to expire like in January.
Got a bad. Okay.
So we're, we're, we'll be nowhere near for him to do anything, but that doesn't mean he can't come back and start again.
Right.
Cool, motion to rescind the ninety-day agreement, hold agreement for three thirty-three.
Wyatt will second.
Ooh, I think Wyatt was louder, all right, all right, I wish by Charlie could have hit it to us. Second by Wyatt, to approve the rescinding of, uh, the ninety-day hold for Evan Reese, had nothing to do with Tom Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Griffin.
I'm saying, that's fine, thank you. All right, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, uh, this is Jeannie.
Yes, I've been working with this Etta Stray from the Department of Safety and Professional Services. There's a few things we needed to update in our building codes and things, I've been working with the building inspector, but we need to have the ordinance written. Uh, we don't have something about these camping units in ours, so I sent it to Bill, and he wrote it for me. Um, we just have to have it, it just lists, there's quite a few other ones that we currently have in there, we just have to list camping units also. Um, and then I still need to, uh, we had to send some insurance paperwork, and then, I'm trying to find another thing I needed to do. Uh, we just had a, a building inspector fill out some commercial and electrical forms, so then we'll be where we're supposed to be with this department and safety, so. Um, it's just, and it all came from Bill, Bill wrote it, it's nothing that's.
Nothing urgent that we have to review?
No controversy.
No, it's just something that needs to be in our ordinance, so.
Yeah. Yep. Cummings will make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Austin Cool's second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to re, reprove ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, camping, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Recommendation boards, committees, and commissions, public health and safety, snowmobile trail.
Yep, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six snowmobile trail, it's the exact same trail as last year, um, it came to council, so do you want these individual for approvals?
Like the holiday parade next, I mean?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, we usually do it, it's not, just do them separate.
Okay. Okay, so Cummings will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six snowmobile trail map.
Griffin's second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Griffin to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six snowmobile trail map, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion carried.
The holiday parade event is on December thirteenth, it's the exact same as last year, so I will make a motion to approve the holiday parade event application. That was listed for December thirteenth at five PM.
Thomas's second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Thomas to approve the holiday parade repeat event, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Uh, ports and pay, this was one of the changes we had to the agenda, um, the water light added pay number twenty-nine, so. Uh, they're both very largely in this packet, there we go. This one is twenty-eight, I'm sorry, this one's twenty-nine, twenty-eight's above it, so twenty-eight is, uh, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirty-four cents. And twenty-nine is four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Cummings will make that motion for that approved amount on twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Austin Cool's second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve ports and pay twenty-eight and twenty-nine in the stated amount. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Warren, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried, and the Town and Country Monthly Report is all of these pages, review them at your leisure, lots and lots of pictures, it's getting there. All right, ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, uh, this is a fence ordinance, we actually had a bit of a, a. Friendly neighborhood dispute, and we did talk to the lawyer, and Bill said the way we had our ordinance written up, that it definitely needed to have a dimension. We've verbally said different. We've verbally said different things, like two feet, I think somebody may have mentioned three feet, so we've never really had any issues with it. As long as I've ever been on council, I have no idea how long it's been this way, but it is what it is, so we have added in this section four. That it needs to be no less than two feet from the property line unless you have other arrangements from the neighbor, so if a neighbor doesn't care if it's a foot, eight inches. Or even on the property line, they just need that approval. We discussed everything else that was in here, um, there were things like, uh, what the fence should look like, it's, you know, the pretty side on one side, the other side, whatever, and. We, the planning commission chose not to even take that up, we do have things in there, like no electric fence and stuff like that, so. This was really the only, uh, source of contention, was to put in the dimension.
We should maybe develop a consent form.
To have them sign, it does say that they need have their consent, do we have it when they get the permit? Is it on that permit, that it, if it's on the line, that they have to have the neighbor sign it or something?
No, I don't believe it's on the permit.
Is that what you're referring to, is on the permit to make sure that they bring it in?
Will you bring like a separate form where they sign off?
Or, yeah, so that you know that they didn't, uh, obtain the permission, like the chicken.
Well, we do, we do, yeah, we do get a piece of paper from them that's signed, but yes, we can have a standard form, that makes sense.
Just add it to the actual permit if it's on, it's less than two feet?
If necessary, this one has to be.
We'll try and help bring it to you, babe.
Included.
That's fine. All right, so do you wanna approve this as is, and then make the motion to bring in the permit for approval, yeah?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, that's perfectly fine.
Um, I'll move to approve, let me scroll back here, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Charles Cool second.
All right, motion by Wired, second by Charlie Cool to approve twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, and do you wanna make the motion to bring in? Up, uh, the, the permit, or do you just want her to add it and be done with it? Do you need to see it?
I don't think I need to see it.
Okay.
I don't need to.
So just the request then, then the motion then is to.
Have staff, have staff do that.
Just to stand for.
Are we talking about another form?
No, the, there is already a permit now.
I understand that.
Right, so then there just needs to be a section, if less than two feet, you need the, the, the.
I understand that, my question is, are we creating another form just for the written consent?
No.
It's just part of the application form.
So we're gonna modify the existing form?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm not far creating.
No, 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 just, just add a line, that's all it is.
Em, yeah, could emulate what we do for the chickens.
Yep.
Consent for the chickens.
Yep.
Add line on form, staff, Genie's staff, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. All right, public works, twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one DPW on call hours.
I will move to defer that because it was deferred from committee.
Okay.
Cool second.
Motion by Wired, second by Charlie Cool to defer until it is ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, post, motion carried, same with the lawn permit?
I will move to defer that. Uh, pending edits from tonight's discussion.
Got it.
Austin Cool second.
Motion by Wired, second by Austin Cool to defer that until it is ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, approving the purchase, are we gonna get it this time of the squad?
Yes, and it's, it's in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ten. That was the lowest bid out of the four, I will make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Hasli will second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Hasli to approve, uh, the purchase of the new Ford vehicle, and that's in, within budget.
Were you supposed to do that? Sorry, did I take your job? Were you supposed to do that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, that's fine, it doesn't matter, it's all good.
Okay.
All right, uh, it, it is a dollar value, roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes. Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasli, yes.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, future agenda items and announcements, it is that time of year again. Spring elections, uh, we do have three seats that are up, um, and at large, Ron Griffin, Alder One, Sarah Cummings. Alder Two, Austin Cool, I do believe papers need to be taken out by December first.
That's the first day you can take them.
Correct, that's the first day you can get them, correct, thank you. Um, and then they need to be returned by December twenty-sixth?
No, January sixth.
Oh, the non-candidacy, I'm sorry, that's right.
Yeah, non-candidacy, yes, it has to be by Friday, December twenty-sixth. Um, if you can let me know before then, um, if I know if you're not running, that would be very helpful, so I wouldn't have to be here till five, if you three have gotten back to me before then, so. That's just a favor, if you do, you do, if you don't, I will be here till five.
On a Friday, I mean, she wants to leave it.
Yeah. And, yeah.
By statutes, you probably have to be here, right?
No, if all three, if the people that are running have, have taken out papers or told me they're not running, then I don't, there's no one else to wait for, so I would have fulfilled all that.
All right, so.
So the primary will be the February seventeenth, and the, and the election will be the sixteenth.
Wonderful.
Or not the sixteenth, that was the seventh. It's a seventh.
Got it. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll, we'll repeat this again in two weeks and we'll do a better job.
I got it, we're good.
Which we both collectively said weird things, that's all right, I'll let you take it next time. It's awesome.
All right, winter parking starts, uh, Sarah announced that already, November fifteenth, that is good. Um, I've got two things just to bring up, um, agendas have been a blast. No matter how hard we try, it is next to impossible to get everything to stay firm from, uh, Friday to the next Thursday. Ports and pay was one of them, we didn't get that until Monday, uh, the, the lawyer on the parlor, that didn't come in, because that was on the agenda, we took it off. So Charlie and I were talking a little bit, Genie and I were as well too, trying to figure out a better way to do this. So we're gonna do a little, little research, Charlie had mentioned something about being able to put it in a folder. That all the council sees it, but it doesn't actually get published until it's, it's like firmed up Tuesday or Wednesday, so we're just gonna take a stab at trying to do a better job of. Making sure you're aware of things that are happening, for the most part, these agendas, the most of it doesn't change, we added in a ports and we took out something to go back to committee, so it's not. Earth shattering stuff that we're throwing in there, but you never know what is gonna happen, that's just the, the nature of this job, so we just don't want.
Twenty-four hours?
At a minimum, and you got clerks.
The agenda has to be posted twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Right.
The, the meeting parts of it can be up to two hours before the meeting, you can, you can.
But twenty-four hours for the agenda.
And I have reached, reached out to the clerks list, and I have four and a half pages of clerk's information, how they do it, so I'm glad to share that too, so.
So we're, we're just gonna try to find a better way so that people that want to read things way in advance absolutely can, and people that are fine with waiting a couple of days before, they can. But it's, it's more stressful in the office with all these changes and stopping and starting, and that's how mistakes get made, so we're just, we're, we're gonna try and do a better job at that. And then if Charlie can give us any tips on some, you know, his suggestions, that's fine. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to do is talk about, um, like some sort of a marketing campaign, now that we don't have officially, uh, anybody doing economic development besides myself and Genie. And you guys have seen some of the stuff that I've put out there, uh, for the, for the CDA, getting back to some sort of a marketing campaign, I've seen other municipalities do it, whether it's on a Facebook or something else. And if I can get a lot of the areas in our city set up, that we can put that together, I'd like that, because I know Janey would love to create something like that in her, her marketing world. I think that she can come up with something, because we've got to get things building, and there's, people aren't necessarily looking at our website to find it, so I'm just trying to get creative. That doesn't cost us any extra money, just us to create it in Facebook and website, and Jefferson County can post it as well, with that, so. Just know I'll be coming to see you guys. Anybody else have anything?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ooh, motion by Charlie Cool, second by Wired, do adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried, thank you.
Not saying your name.
Say my name, say my name.
Richard.
All right. Yeah, so you can decide what you think is the best.